Good evening. Good evening, Daytona Beach. How are y'all fast with that light? And welcome to the December 15th regularly scheduled meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are happy to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing, and items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinance reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse, obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, and members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Derek L. Henry?
Here.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2021 Special Election Canvassing Board, the November 3rd Closed Shade Meeting of the City Commission, the November 4th Canvassing Board Meeting, the November 17th Swearing In Ceremony, and the November 17th Regular City Commission Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. And now move on to agenda item number five. It is our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we would like to add the following Bike Week sponsorships to item number eight, L. 1,000 to First Step Shelter from Commissioner Cantu, and 1,000 to First Step Shelter from Commissioner Strickland.
All right.
And to approve the agenda with...
Can I just say one thing? As of right now, if any of the other commissioners would like to donate, there's a match going on. Mike from DME.
Yeah, Mike Pinagio from DME is matching any amount that is donated to First Step. Is it for the month of December, or it's up until a certain date? Yeah, so if we give, I will also give 1,000, and I will from my Bike Week funds if y'all would approve that. Okay.
I'll do 500.
Okay.
I'll met your five.
Okay.
I'll do 500, too.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do 500.
And I would also like to, at this time, announce that you guys remember who the winner of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge was?
Which year?
Yeah, you guys. 2021, the most recent, the one that we remember.
Oh, that one.
The winner of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge receives $500 as the winner. And most people cash their check, but being that it's my event, I am making a donation. And so, Ms. Goodman, if you're listening, we would also like to add that 500 into the donation to the First Step Shelter as a charitable gift from the city.
Okay.
I'd like to give 500 for my Bike Week also.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I have a motion to approve the agenda with changes. I need a second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, now move on to item number six, which is our presentation. Item number six A is a presentation for the Conklin Davis Center for the Visually Impaired. And thank you guys so much for...
Your patience, didn't I?
Patience, yes.
So I'm Nancy Epps. 127 Old Carriage Road, Ponce Inlet is my residence. I'm here with the Conklin Davis Center, which is 405 White Street, Daytona Beach. And Ronnie Davis is the CEO, and she'll be speaking after me. My role tonight is as the Secretary of the Board, and the history of the Conklin Center before it was the Conklin Davis Center is what I want to share with you. First, I'd like to say thank you for having us. It's nice to see everybody, all the familiar faces. It's really a joy to be here again. So, the Conklin Center was originally given to the city of Daytona Beach by the Department of Defense when they de... What's the word I'm trying to say? When they deplatformed, I guess you could say, the barracks and everything that had been used during World War II on what is currently the campus of all the Division of Blind Services facilities. And the Conklin Center started, or what ended up becoming the Conklin Center, actually started in what's now the marketplace on Second Street, and it ended up transitioning to an old barracks on the same property where we are now. In 1978, a lion named Millard Conklin had a vision that not only blind people, but blind people with additional disabilities needed services to improve their quality of life, make them employable, that they could live on their own, you know, things like that, that would actually be a benefit to the community, too, not just to the person. So he worked very hard with the Division of Blind Services, which at the time was called the Bureau of Blind Services, and of course, a lot of people raising money to have his vision come true. In 1979, excuse me, the Conklin Center was christened and opened, and ever since then, up until last year, provided just those services to people who had not only blindness, as I said, but additional disabilities such as autism, cerebral palsy, learning disabilities, things like that. So things that would make someone who wasn't blind have potentially challenges in life, but then to be blind on top of it made life especially challenging. So for 41 years, the Conklin Center provided those services, and we turned out an amazing number of people who went on to have wonderful lives of their own. Some of them went on to get further education. They graduated from college, they bought their own homes, they started families. Now, remind you, these are people who, in the general handicap community, wouldn't probably have succeeded very well. But because of the training and services that they provided at the Conklin Center, they were 85% employed, as opposed to about 30% in the general handicap population who were not blind. So a lot of good work was done at the Conklin Center. Last year, you probably remember seeing in the paper, we had some difficulties with the state, which is about 60% of our funding, and they canceled our contract. And so we were no longer able to continue our residential services. We did continue the services that we have committed to, to the graduates in the community. So we continued to keep a skeleton staff to provide what we call supported living and supported employment services to those people who were still in our community who had graduated. But obviously, that wasn't going to be enough because we wanted to get back to the mission we had had. Well, Ronnie David and I happened to be friends already, and we got talking about what was happening, and we started talking about merger. And so here we are, as of January 1st this year, we are now at the Conklin Davis Center for the Visually Impaired, and I am now going to turn the rest of the story over to Ronnie to tell you what we've been doing since then.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for inviting us, Mayor and Commissioners. We're so excited to be here, and we really enjoyed the earlier agenda. It's very interesting and very exciting for Daytona Beach. I have been working with the blind community in Daytona Beach for almost 30 years at the Center for the Visually Impaired, and as Nancy said, we merged this past year. And the Conklin Center is now the most comprehensive agency providing services in the state of Florida. And we're also located on the largest blind service campus in the United States, right here in Daytona Beach. It's really, really, truly amazing. The services that we offer are very comprehensive. We offer services to blind babies, and we help the parents to understand how to work with their babies and to help them through the developmental delays that are common with babies who are born blind. We have a wonderful facility. We have a blind babies area where we have all kinds of adaptive toys, sound-emitting toys and tactile, all kinds of toys for the babies to help them develop. We also have a number of other types of programs, and we recently started a partnership with Metro Electronics, and we have a workshop at our facility. It's, by the way, it's a 27,000-square-foot facility with 16 dormitory rooms and three one-bedroom apartments for the students to use. So in the workshop, we work with Metro Electronics, and they provide the components for audio equipment in cars, and they drop off the components to us. Our students assemble them, and they work, they get paid minimum wage while they're working in the workshop, while they're in training at our facility. So we're very excited about that partnership that we've recently established. We also started a new project that we're very excited about. We have a group of ladies who, three years ago, as you can see on the screen, I'm talking about the Tactile Art Project right now. Three years ago, we had a group of ladies who produced tactile art. They were out of the Daytona Art League, and they were producing tactile art for the blind, and they had an exhibit at the Peabody Theater. And we had over 250 to 300 people who attended that exhibit. And the ladies approached me this year when we opened the Conklin Center and wanted to know if we had any room for them, and we found a room that wasn't being used, and we painted it and fixed it up, and we created an art studio for the ladies to produce tactile art for the blind. So all down our hallways at our facility, it's really beautiful, it looks like an art gallery, as well as in our lobby, where it's just filled with artwork from the ladies who are producing the art there. And we're getting ready after January to have art exhibits at the center and invite the community in for our art exhibits, and hopefully, we'll have some of our blind clients engaging in producing tactile art as well. So we're very excited about this project. We also have a number of other types of programs at our facility. We do orientation and mobility training, and we work with students, we work closely with VoTran, and we teach our students to use the buses, the fixed route buses, as well as the paratransit service, and we teach them to cross streets in Daytona Beach, to use the buses, you know, just to help them to become as independent as possible. And while I'm on this subject, I want to tell you a funny story about orientation and mobility. I used to teach that when I first worked at the agency, but prior to that, I was in Arkansas, Little Rock, Arkansas, and I had an orientation and mobility student that I worked with who was totally blind, and he had a guide dog. And as you know, if you walk with a guide dog, you can get lost quicker than you do with a cane because the dog moves kind of swiftly along. So I would tell my client, make sure that if you get lost, don't keep walking, stop. If you feel like you've become disoriented, then ask a passerby, listen for footsteps, and ask them, you know, how to get to your destination. He was trying to get to a bank. So I left, and then he went on his way, and he eventually did try that route, and he did get lost, and he did ask a pedestrian. But what happened was that the pedestrian knelt down on the ground, and he yelled into the dog's ear, "You go straight, and then two blocks." This is a true story. This is what my client told me. So sometimes people misunderstand, they think that guide dogs have mastered the English language, but they really only learn about 40 words when they come out of the guide dog school. And then we can actually teach them, and I've done that, with teaching dogs new words. For example, the bus stop or bus bench, we can teach them that, and the dog will learn that. Once they've learned a few words, they really learn very quickly. So we have orientation and mobility lessons with all of our students, children, teenagers, senior citizens we work with. We have a wonderful teenage program, and we take our teenagers every Saturday on all types of interesting field trips. We've gone to Disney, we've gone to... We took them recently to an exotic petting zoo in Orlando. We've taken them to swim with the dolphins, and these are blind kids that have never experienced anything like this before. It's really exciting for them. So these are just, to give you a little idea of some of our programs, but we are so excited to bring the Conklin Center back to life because it was out of commission for about a year, and all the... They had a staff of over 50 people there. They were all laid off. So these were people living in the area that were not working, and when we brought the agency back, we hired most of them back. So these people are all... Many of the staff that previously worked for the center are now employed again with us after bringing this contract back. So we are very excited about it, and we... Yeah, we have 54 employees.
Oh, great.
We also have a nature trail on the property, and when we took over the building, the building really needed a lot of work, particularly our air conditioning system, which is very old. It's an old chiller system that was put in in 1996. So we were very concerned about that, and we've been paying a lot of money to keep it working. But we recently received a grant from the Volusia County CDGB funding, and they're going to help us with funding towards our air conditioning system to replace it. So we're very excited about that. We also have a nature trail on the property, and when we took over the building, these are photographs of it on the screen right now, when we took over the building, you couldn't even see the concrete pathways along the nature trail. It's a wheelchair-accessible nature trail, and we have since, in the past four or five months, had many, many groups of people, volunteers. We have one of our ophthalmologists who's on our Board of Directors who came with his backhoe and tractor, and some of our board members came with chainsaws, and they cut down trees, they cleared all the paths, and we've had a few groups from Daytona Beach garden clubs come. And we're hoping to really restore, completely restore the property. There's greenhouses on the property that are very dilapidated, and they, at one time, had a horticulture program there, and we would like to bring that back as well and to restore those greenhouses. So we're hoping to apply for funding in the future to do that. But the property looks great now, and we would love to invite all of you out to our agency to see it, and we would be more than happy to give you a tour of the facility so that you can see what we're doing there.
Manager's already been there, and he's...
I have a question.
Yes.
You're saying you're back. Did you acquire the state funding again?
Yes.
Very good.
We... The agency lost the contract, it's a one-and-a-half-million-dollar contract, and we worked for about a year, Nancy and I, in negotiating with the state to get that contract back. So we were able to do that. So we... The agency has funded about 60 or so percent, and we require community support to keep this going, so we hope that the city of Daytona Beach will help us in this endeavor. It's really a wonderful opportunity. There's nothing like it. The Conklin Center, the residential facility for the multi-handicapped blind, is the only one of its kind in the United States. So it's really quite amazing that we have that right here in Daytona Beach.
It is, and it's in my zone.
Mm-hmm.
And I, too, have toured it. In fact, I had planned a fundraiser through my university when all of the things happened with the state, but I am so glad that you're back.
Well, we'd like to invite you back.
Truly amazing.
And we welcome your fundraiser.
I can't even imagine walking around my house blind compared to what all you teach them. I saw the kitchen, I saw the mock bedroom, teaching them how to make their beds and how to cook, and then the little room in the back with the film that they rap as a job.
Right.
I was just amazed.
And what is really truly amazing, when you think about it, to be blind, but to also be multi-handicapped blind and have additional disabilities, whether it's cognitive impairment, autism, hearing impairment, and we have right now about 80 to 90 individuals who are working and living in Daytona Beach.
I met a young man from Russia.
Who graduated. Yeah, he's with us now.
He's still there?
He's with us.
And he was blind, and when they couldn't do anything else with him in Russia, his parents sent him here so that he could be independent.
He came back.
It just wasn't anything that he could... They just couldn't even fathom him being able to do what they thought him to do.
Yeah, he speaks five languages.
So at some...
Wow.
At some point, about a year and a half ago, before the shutdown happened, I was out there teaching dance at the center, and I've actually brought people out there previous years to teach dance and fitness. And it was a... We toured the facility. I thought it was a really nice thing, was watching somebody move in, somebody move out, and I said, huh, it's a good place to learn. So I will most likely be back. Thank you.
Good, good. We would love to have you come back and tour.
Looks a lot different.
Yeah. Yeah, we've done some renovations, but we have a long way to go, and we're going to gradually be working on it. So thank you all for your support. Thank you for inviting us today, and we hope to see you there.
Mr. Harold Cardwell, at one time, was head of your Horticulture Program, I believe, and he was blind himself. And one of your fundraisers a number of years ago, you had a blind dinner. I thought I could peel my way around. I was totally blown away at how much I did not know.
Yeah, me, too.
And how we were eating everybody else's food.
We will be doing that again.
Well, I don't think I'll be much better at it. I haven't been practicing, for sure. But you...
We're an apron, I found out.
Huh? We toured the place a number of years ago and totally blown away of all the programs you had, and I'm so glad you're bringing them back again. This is like a star in the crown of Daytona Beach.
It really is.
Not only is it vitally necessary to those people, it is really a unique place for Daytona Beach, to be the one and only multi-handicapped...
Yes, yes.
I thank you, ladies, for doing all the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
We served the entire state, by the way.
I wanted to say, as a testimony to your work, I know my brother probably remembers this, but I know most people, when they go to college, they bring their laundry and luggage home.
Yes, she did.
I went to college, and I brought a blind lady that I didn't even know home, and she had gotten hit by a car, and I knew her daughter, and I was the only person that they knew, so I packed her up and moved her to Daytona, to my mother's house, with her dog, and left her there while I went back to college.
He does remember.
While I went back to college, I packed her up one weekend, and I was like, okay, I'm not going to be taking care of you, I'm going to move you back to... Didn't even ask my mom. I just packed this lady that I didn't know, maybe had known her maybe a month or two. I had packed her up and shipped her back to Daytona. She ended up getting into the... Into your program.
Oh, okay.
Which was really good for her because she had... She wasn't...
Didn't have other handicaps.
She... Yeah, she had other handicaps as well, and she didn't function well on her own, hence how she got hit by a dog, how her and her dog, guide dog, got hit by a car. And she came to your program, and what an amazing experience that was for her. She lived on the campus as well. And when she left your program, she was totally, totally, totally independent. Ended up, she... Her guide dog was no longer...
Service.
Yeah, her service dog, I'm sorry. Her service dog was no longer feasible for her because he was too traumatized from getting hit by a car, but they got her another... She got another dog when she was there, and she met her husband there, and she got married. So it was just the best experience, and watching her come to your program, needing so much help and so much care, and leaving so independent. I often drive by that facility and think about that story and the wonderful work that you're doing there. So I know you're doing great work there.
That's great. And one of the things I also want to mention is that many of these students that graduate, the 80 or 90 that are right now living in Daytona Beach and working, some of them work in restaurants, stores. We have about eight people working at Metro Electronics and other manufacturing companies, and some of them have recently purchased condos. They've saved up. One person has been saving for seven years and just bought a condo in Daytona Beach. So these people are really, you know, they're great citizens. They're contributing to the economy and to the community.
Well, I'm going to come out and pay you a visit, and we'll bring Louie, and we'll do an episode of a show that I do here called Making a Difference in Daytona.
Oh, nice. Yeah, we would love that.
So Ms. Goodman, we'll reach out to you, and, you know, we'll come out, and I'll take a tour, and then we'll sit down and just talk about the things that you're doing, and then we'll be able to air it on our channel.
Wonderful, thank you.
Things of that nature.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you so much.
We're still looking forward to the art in public places.
Yeah.
One of the things that Commissioner May is talking about, that's the group that I was going to introduce you to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, we probably will be having an exhibit. Also, we are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony February 3rd or 4th, but we'll let you know which date it is. And we had planned that all year, but because of COVID, we had to cancel it a few times. But we're scheduling now August 3rd, I mean, February 3rd or 4th, so we would love to invite all of you to the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Especially of course, Commissioner Reed, whose zone it's in.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see everyone.
Okay, well, now move on to item number seven. This is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. I did have a number of people sign up for the framework item before it passed, so I'll call your name if you don't want to speak. You can just speak.
No, it's on...
It's on consent, yeah. So our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Chris Bowler. You don't want to speak, okay? On deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. No, I'm not going to talk on framework, I already did. But I was shocked, I did not realize, I've gone to almost all the facilities that we have in the city, that this facility was the largest now in the United States. There are so many things that we have in Daytona Beach as a small city. When we were 65,000, I, at one point, did a list, like the sports programs. There were, what, three at NASCAR? We had baseball. At one point, we had tennis. So there are things that we have that we should tout, we should blow our horns and shout, that this is what's here in town, and we don't. We hide it under a bushel basket, and we really should. With regard to the agenda, there are two things I'd like to respond to, and one, the... I'm on the wrong one. The children's playground in Midtown, they're seeking a grant to put in a playground within a block of another playground, which is in half a block of another playground. So to put three playgrounds, block after block after block, I think we should look at, especially what you put in that playground, because you've got a little tiny park just off of the student center, then you've got, I think it's Joe Harris Park, then you've got Josie Roger, not Josie Rogers, Daisy Stocking Park, thank you. Then you've got Josie Roger, not Josie Rogers, Daisy Stocking Park, thank you. So you've got three parks. So you really shouldn't duplicate things because there really aren't any kids in the neighborhood. The kids in the neighborhood are 18, 19, and 20. So we should look, when we do the park, to really make sure that we're not duplicating what we already have. Secondly, the banners. We have banners that go down ISB. We have banners that go over the bridge. It's been 20 some odd years since we've had banners on the boardwalk. So we're having a company do banners. I'm asking you to consider the boardwalk, that use the boardwalk, especially on Saturday nights during the summer. A1A should have banners when we have events. They are great opportunities to showcase our city, and we're not taking advantage of them. So I'm thinking that if whatever's here, I'm asking that those two streets be added to the banners. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown.
Yes, Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Merry Christmas to everybody in the commission. I didn't say that earlier. On the consent agenda, once again, we have a, an item where the city is paying litigation. And, you know, not discussing the matters of the case, but what I would like to see done, as I stated in a previous payment that we made in another case, is have it itemized, okay? You did spell out the fact that you have a litigant and you have an attorney. But I would like to see what, you know, it's like everything else the city buys, they itemize. Okay, so much is going for this, so much going for that. I'd like to see exactly how much is going to the attorney versus the litigant. So I would really like to see an itemization anytime you're spending my tax dollars on litigation settlements. Thank you.
Then I had some speakers that I believe were here for the framework item. Nathan Sullivan. And Rose is not here. Philip Maroney is not here, and Frank Molnar. And is this for a consent agenda item? Okay, those are the only speakers for the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a second from Commissioner May, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Move on now to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, 14 South Halifax Redevelopment Beachside Gateway Residential Mixed Use. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the land development code to rezone 0.1 plus or minus acres of property located at 14 South Halifax Avenue from redevelopment beachside gateway residential mixed use and residential professional to redevelopment beachside gateway residential mixed use. Repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
Okay.
We have speakers.
I do, I have Ms. Jessica Gao here for any questions, and then I have two public speakers. Our first speaker is Stephen Ware, and on deck is John Nicholson.
How's everyone tonight?
Good, sir.
I live adjacent, across the street from this property. They have been operating as an illegal Airbnb for a couple of years. They finally got caught. City fined them. That's why this is going into effect now. The residence right beside them has been okayed from some, for some reason. They are already operating and have been. We've had, all the residents around there do not want this happening. We have nothing but, these people only want the rent checks to clear. Once it clears, they let, they let groups of, sometimes there's 20 to 30 people in the groups in these homes, and they have outrageous parties, they loud music. And when you try to get with them to calm things down, they treat you like, like, you know, they paid their rent, they can do anything they want. When we bought our homes, there was no motel operations going on in our neighborhood. Now they are, and we don't like it. I mean, we bought the houses as residences, not as a business. I mean, and none of my neighbors want it. The only ones that do want it is the one that's right beside them that does the same thing. And then, all my other friends, they weren't able to make it to the meeting, so I'm kind of speaking for the whole neighborhood. And there's only four or five houses left because they've tore everything down to us. I don't know what they're going to do with all those vacant properties, but hopefully it won't be another motel situation. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Was that the Ocean?
I'm sorry, sir.
Wait a minute, John. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was at the meeting at the Ocean Center, and this came up, along with the affordable housing and how we are to change our infill, our CRA districts, our older sections of town. And if you look at this property, there are three houses there. One is already B and B because of the zoning. The middle one is half and half. The last one, the third one, is residential. Then you have vacant property, then you have the city-owned property. So it's an island. So this is the area that we want to put in either condos or apartments on the river. That's the plan for that section of the Main Street. So an Airbnb next to a condo or an apartment house is not unusual. To have these three houses isolated, because if you look at the map, you'll see all the vacant land around it. There's vacant land behind it, almost to the south of it, across the street from it. The house almost diagonally across the street from it burned down a couple of months ago, and they tore it down. So this is an isolated incident. I'm expecting, hopefully, that you will let the third house return into an Airbnb. Because it's right there on Main Street. It gets everything that Main Street gets. Now, during the meeting at the Ocean Center, they were talking about the mixed use that are here. This section of Main Street, believe it or not, is automotive. The rest of Main Street is tourist. So there's, Airbnb is permitted not far from here, okay? Going all the way down to the beach. You can have it off Main Street. There are properties either side. I wish they had a diagram of where it's permitted. I'm asking you to think not only of this property, but the entire core area, the CRA. Instead of having mix and match, a little bit here, a little bit there, make it more comprehensive. Because things have changed over the 40 years that I've been here. So many houses have been torn down. So many businesses on Main Street have been torn down. So I'm asking if a comprehensive look at this for zoning, because it really does increase the property values. I have two Airbnbs on my street, and they both spent a ton of money fixing them up. They do look good. I have had no problems with the Airbnb on my street. The lady that had all the bikers that the gentleman was referring to no longer has this property. She sold it. This is a new woman, all right? She may or may not react like the older one, but I don't think so. I talked to her when they had the meeting. So I'm asking you to think about this, because it really is an isolated incident. A bunch of homes. It's on the edge of a bunch of homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jessica Gao, Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background here. This site is unique, in my opinion. It's got split zoning, and we don't really see that a lot in Daytona Beach. And so I'm sorry that I have not heard from Mr. Ware before. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and we had about five or six people come out. One of the residents, first things that they said was, when we get a letter from Cobb Cole, we get curious and we get suspicious, which that's fine. And so by the end of the meeting, they said, you know, we think what you're doing here makes sense for this property. It is currently split between a zoning that allows short-term rentals and a zoning that does not. And so when we came in for the rezoning request, what we have to work through with staff is, is the zoning that we are requesting appropriate for the site? And it's pretty easy for us in staff this time because you've already found that it is on a third of the site. And so that kind of carries over to the rest of it. The discussion on the code enforcement, the site did go through the code enforcement process. When the owner was notified that short-term rentals were not permitted, she stopped renting, blocked it off for six months, but the way the code enforcement works now is if it's advertised, and it was still posted on the website, that counts as a violation. So she did pay $16,000 in fines for that posting and ceased the operation while we went through the rezoning request, so I wanted you guys to have that information. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
So hold it. You say she paid 16,000 in fines?
Yes. Yeah, she paid the, because it was a, it was not properly zoned, she received a code enforcement violation, and it remained on the site. So she, or the property owner, I don't know if it's she, but she says she came in, and before they were able to go through the zoning process, had to pay for that. And for the record, they were required to have a community meeting and send notices to residents within a certain area. 32 residents were sent a notice, and one of those residents was me because I'm the city of Daytona Beach's representative. We have property on there to attend a meeting. They did have a meeting with the neighbors. I think five to eight people showed up. Those individuals say that they were on, in favor of it, and that is part of the backup documents. So that's just information for you all. You are required to have the public meetings, and the individual paid the fines so that they could do the short-term rentals because of the zoning. So all of the residents that are required by law to be notified around their, their addresses and names are in the book, as well as what was done at the planning commission meeting with the minutes. And so the person actually paid those fines to code to get into compliance to offer that particular opportunity adjacent to the other properties in the area, as John has stated.
My question is, if we allow this, does it open the door to more people wanting to do this?
If we were to change the zoning as a commission for certain additional areas, but there is an area adjacent to this property, half of that property I'll just use for, for a statement. The bathroom and the kitchen were zoned for short-term rentals, but the three bedrooms are not.
But what is the impact, the total impact of us, if we were to go along with this? What's the total impact to changing that area? Are we changing our usage?
Our staff redevelopment may come up, but we'll be adding another home to short-term rentals that are already on that block.
Could more people come and ask for this in this way?
And if we, if we bring it to the commissioners for approval and you all approve it, it could, it could go further.
Well, go ahead, Reed. I'll go ahead and make an announcement.
State your name and title, Reed.
Berger, Redevelopment Director, and I wanted to just let you know that the future land use of this area is riverfront lodging, and that extends south to the park there. That's further south. So everything that you see that's on the riverside or the west side of Halifax, that is a riverfront lodging in the future land use. It's intended to be there for short-term accommodations and has been there a long time. This is really just dealing with one property. It doesn't set a precedent for any other decisions you make in the future. This is just to deal with this one particular issue.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have other comments? All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Aye, sorry. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, 6-1. Let me go ahead and digress for a quick moment. We are, well, I'll do it at the end of the meeting. Go ahead. Sorry.
Me? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to item 9B, which is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Third Amendment to the First United Methodist Church Plan Development Agreement and Hallmark Heritage Plan Development. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance relating to approximately 42.2 acres of property located on the west side of Williamson Boulevard, approximately 1,000 feet north of Strickland Range Road and 750 feet south of Memorial Medical Parkway. Rezoning the property from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General Zoning District. Approving the Third Amendment to the First United Methodist Church Plan Development Agreement to remove the property from the scope of that agreement. Approving the Hallmark Heritage Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property with residential, commercial, communication, and medical uses, subject to conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment and the agreement. Repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner Reed. We have speakers.
I do have Joey Posey here, the attorney for the applicant, for any questions.
All right, do we have any questions of Joey? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Development Services Amending Code of Warrantes Bar Closing Times. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Section 10-3B of the City Code regarding extended hours permits for establishments stealing in alcoholic beverages by changing the required closing time for establishments holding extended hours permits from 3:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. and changing associated deadlines accordingly. Repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second.
I have something to say. This one, I'm really fighting with myself on this. I know it's only first reading. Someone that's been in the industry, so, and right now, I know how COVID has hurt a lot of our businesses. This time change from, for me, knowing what goes on in that kind of life, I think it automatically hurts the bartenders, the waitresses, the entertainers. And I, I just, I think we need a community workshop. We need to know why. This is going to make a difference over there, and I think we need to listen to our merchants and our bartenders, entertainers, and everything. I, like I said, I have been in this business in the late 80s and early 90s, and I know that last hour makes a huge difference. Young people usually don't even go out till around 11 o'clock. And I have, let's say, made $30 in tips. I had a husband going to college at the same time. We were supporting a family to earn his BA. And, I mean, sometimes when you're working, it's not like food waitressing. Food waitressing, you're getting 10%, 20% of your tips. Here, you never know what you're going to make, if you got a good tipper coming in or if you don't. I mean, like I said, you could end up with $30 in that last hour. You have all the other bartenders and waitresses coming, you know, to relax after a hard day, and they're good tippers, and I could end up leaving with $150. Entertainers, they make usually three to four sets, okay? And back then, they actually used to make a little bit of money. These days, entertainers, most businesses don't even use entertainers. They're lucky they're making $100, and at the end of their set is that last hour, they're, they're working for tips now. Entertainers are. So, I mean, this one, I'm really struggling. I think it's Christmas time. I mean, right now, the gas prices have went up, rent has went up, food has run up. You go to Walmart, a gallon of milk is $5.90 right now. I just think we're going to be hurting our businesses to even do something like this right now during Christmas. So if we were going to bring this back up, I would like to have a community workshop, maybe end of January, February, and then, I mean, it's Christmas time.
I feel would like to have a workshop or see what else can be done and see all of the reasonings behind it, if there are other things that we can put in place. Because although I'm supporting it now because it's first reading, I don't have intentions of supporting it when it comes back around as of yet, until we have some more conversations about it.
Did we have a workshop on?
Did we have a workshop on?
Yeah, we, we.
I thought we did. The bartenders and everybody came and spoke to us. But maybe we need to hear again, perhaps Cantu wasn't on.
I wasn't.
Ideas at the time and perhaps not May and Strickland.
Well, it wasn't a, it wasn't a workshop, it was a.
Public meeting?
It was a public meeting that went into great detail.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't know how a public workshop is going to flesh out many more ideas and I wish we had known this before tonight because I waited, you know, until we had a full body for us to bring this back up.
And maybe even waiting to January or February to bring this back up and it gives them more time to, I mean, because right now, you got businesses and bartenders and waitresses, they're not even paying attention what we're doing.
No, no. They paid attention because they came out and they told us what they thought of it already. So we're forgetting that we've, we've had the flood of folks in this chamber to express their opinion about this because it received major attention when I first brought this before us. So it's not a new or novel thing. And if we embrace this, you don't have to do it, you know, you can give them a cycle. You know, I would say it could be a cycle of Bike Week.
There was.
You know, you go one Bike Week and you go one Bike Topa Fest and then you implement the new policy. Because, you know, we talked about this. This is not a, you know, a new thing and they were all able to come in and go over this. The police chief made a presentation, I made a presentation. So I know that was a long time ago.
I wasn't here then.
Yes, you were.
I thought.
You were here. You were here because he was here.
Because you spoke up and told us about being a bartender. Weren't you a bartender before?
The manager was here.
But that was during Bike Week when we were trying to, we weren't discussing the time closing. That was Bike Week.
No, no.
Yes, it was.
We, we discussed it because the chief gave a presentation.
Right.
I had given a presentation and he came back and he, he gave a presentation. So we, we did discuss it, I think.
Well, I just don't think, if you haven't been in the industry, you just do not understand what this is, what this is doing, that extra hour to our, and that, I mean, sometimes that could be a bartender going to work and that could mean their electric bill, that, that extra hour to pay their electric bill and they, I mean.
Well, I'm not, not begrudging that. I, I don't want to be cavalier about someone's capacity to meet the demands of life based upon something that we do. But, you know, I've laid out my rationale, you know, and I, I, I want to share it with you just succinctly as, you know, tonight because I don't really want to, you know, I want to know what other folks think.
I thought we held off on this until Mr. Strickland came on board.
That's what he's saying.
I thought we held off on this till Mr. Strickland.
Yeah, we did. We held off on this until he came.
He should kind of be brought up to speed.
So I'm, I'm not that interested in.
I would like to speak.
Yeah. And I want to hear from everybody. Go ahead. Yeah.
Well, didn't at one time, you have to educate me on this, probably a city attorney could help me, didn't at one time we have a way for bars, lounges, whatever, at night to extend their hours by paying an additional fee?
Yeah.
That's, that's what this, they do this now. They already do that, but you can illustrate that. That's how they get involved.
Well, if, if that's the case, will, outside of Seabreeze, will, will other establishments still be able to use that extra, extra permit? Can they, can they pay for the extra permit, say somebody that's opening up in another part of the city that's not up against the neighborhood? We're just going to do away with that extra permit by doing this?
No, the extra permit is still in place because anything after midnight creates the extra permit.
Well, in that case, in that case, couldn't we just refuse their, their permit when it's time to renew it?
Well, we don't have to allow the permit at all, but.
I know, but what I'm saying, to keep from doing away with the permit completely, couldn't you, couldn't you just refuse them in neighborhoods or on streets where you've had difficulties, had issues like Seabreeze and allow the rest of the city that have bars or whatever to, to still be able to have that?
Let me explain the regulatory scheme you've got. All right. So this section that you're looking at tonight, the hours of, hours of operation, that is embedded in your extended hours permit. So by state law, the state allows the cities to regulate operations after midnight. If we didn't have a permit, an after-hours permit, everyone would have to close by midnight under state law. But because the state has allowed us to regulate for those late night hours, we allow in our code currently operations until three. But everyone that operates until three has to have a permit from the city. So what we're looking at tonight is really extending that, or rather amending that extended hours permit allowance to reduce the timeframe for which they're allowed to be open. But it's all within an extended hours permit that we issue to every alcoholic beverage establishment in the city.
Still confusing.
If the, if there are violations of the requirements of the permit, for instance, as a, as a condition of the permit, you have to have security on sites, you have to have security cameras. If you violate any of those conditions, your permit can be revoked and then there's an appellate process for that. But, but the type of enforcement you're talking about is really on a case-by-case basis. The ordinance is set up, you know, nor could we justify necessarily prohibiting or allowing alcohol in some sections of the city and not in other sections. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
It is my understanding that the surrounding areas do not, they have the closing at 2:00. This resolution or ordinance wants to have them stop serving at 1:30 and turn out all the lights at 1:30 and the people be gone at 2:00. That would be different than our surrounding areas and we were kind of, when we talked about this, we talked about we wanted to be in concert with the surrounding area hours and things.
And Commissioner, when you say surrounding areas, I believe you mean other jurisdictions.
The other, other cities around our area.
So is this different than the other areas than, in the, in this area? We mean Volusia County.
Yes. Actually, the other areas, you're allowed to serve up to 2:00 and then all drinks go off the bar on all surrounding cities. The new ordinance that we have, it says 1:30, all lights off and then everybody out by 2:00. So actually, you're cutting them back to 1:30.
Now, now, is that accurate? I didn't, I want to be the same as Volusia County. That was the intent that, that we were after.
Yep. And I haven't done a survey of other jurisdictions except to know that their ultimate closing time is 2:00. We certainly have a last call at 1:30 as part of your ordinance.
Mayor Commissioner, I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager.
Uh-huh.
The, the Dramone's Brothers in the back, they say that if we do it the way we're doing it now, this is earlier than tonight, they didn't bring it up just a minute ago. They mentioned that we, Daytona would be different than the county. The other thing that's been stated, which I don't think is correct, which is lights out at 1:30, you stop serving at 1:30, you try to empty the place by 2:00. Staff and so on can stay there. And Captain Lee and I talked a little bit about that stuff this afternoon, but there is not identically, I don't think, from what, and I, I know the Dramone's Brothers from prior things I've done, have represented their family previously. If they are telling me that, I believe that's probably the case. We have not done a survey though, as you mentioned. We could do that.
Okay. On the new ordinance, it says stop serving at 1:30 and lights on the outside is out.
Yeah.
And then by 2:00, everyone is out and employees are the only ones and staff allowed.
That's, that's correct. It's not lights out inside.
No, I didn't say inside, I meant outside.
I just heard lights out, which to me means it's a.
But it doesn't, that is our new ordinance.
Yeah. Lights, it's like a store that's closing, you turn off the lights and from the outside, have the customers exit by 2:00.
But all the other surrounding cities, they are allowed to serve up to 2:00.
And I think that's what Mr. Dramone said in the back. He didn't give me the specifics, but he said that this would be different than surrounding cities.
Correct.
Well, we would, so we, we simply want to be able to serve until 2:00. You're rolling it back exactly the same as others.
So.
That's what I'm saying, what we want to do.
That's our intent.
That's the intent.
Okay. So what we did was just take, you had the later closing, we simply rolled that back. You're right. So the same process stayed in place occurring an hour earlier. And if your intent was to replicate what's around, I don't think we understood that from the perspective of what you have on the dais before you right now.
See, because right now, we stop serving at 2:30 and then you're out by 3:00. So he just went back an hour, but other surrounding cities stop at 2:00, not at 1:30.
Okay, well then, then I only want to be the same as other communities.
If.
We can simply change to that. That's all I want.
That would be relevant.
Simply, we move on.
You want us to just pull back completely and restart it so it's re-agenda?
Uh-huh.
Or you want, or you want to continue this and amend it? Which one, what the commission want to do?
I, from my perspective, it is simply to amend it and see what the, what the feeling is of this body right here. Amend what we have to reflect the surrounding communities and be the same.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
That's a large part of the argument that we made was that we are different than other folks.
True. So if I may, a motion to continue with directions from the commission, which we already understand, we'll do it that way. If there is a motion from the commission to continue with directions.
Yes.
I have a question. Could you explain to me, since I'm not in that industry, could you please explain to me what this actually looks like? So somebody shows up at 1:30, as, as we have it right now, they show up at 1:30 and they order a drink. What happens next?
Well, under the rules, they shouldn't be able to get one. Let's call it 1:31.
Let's call it 1:31.
So they should not be able to get one. Practically speaking, I think that not, will not necessarily be the case, but I'm not out there or in the business, so I can't say for sure.
As of right now, they can get one at 1:30.
As of right now, they could. I think the commissioner's question was if the rule was changed to be what it is now.
Right. And so let's say it's 1:45. They, they, could they actually do this?
They're not supposed to.
Yes, they could be fined.
They are not supposed to.
Okay. And let's talk about the fine.
Under the proposed rule.
What are the implications of the fine? So if somebody does this, they sell a drink at 1:55, the lights are out at 2:00, people are leaving, but they sell the drink, the person sits there and drinks and they leave. They get caught. What's the fine? What's the penalty?
I need to yield to Captain Lee.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question to me?
So you, you walk in and you find somebody has sold a drink and it's like 1:50 and not supposed to do that? What is the penalty? What is the process from that point on?
So it'd be a violation of our chapter, I think it's 10.3 or 10 dash 3, like it'll be hours of, of sale. And that would be a, an issue that law enforcement would address. Usually we would address it through, you know, it would be within our discretion to address typically. It would depend on how egregious the violation was. So we'd be looking at, you know, is it, you know, one beverage that somebody lost track of time versus the whole bar is open and everybody's consuming alcohol still and ultimately if it was a repeat issue that was occurring at the same place. And ultimately, that could lead to a notice to appear or potentially an arrest.
There may be some other implications as well.
There could also be, there could also be, I believe we could take that before the code, the code board as well or the special magistrate, correct?
Yes, it could be a, just as a straight-up code violation. It could result in your license being revoked, in which case you couldn't serve after midnight subject to an appeal. Also, I believe it'd be a state law violation if they're serving, you know, without an after-hours permit, which would be subject to enforcement by ABT.
Yeah. That, that's absolutely correct too, yes.
And actually, the bartender could be fined too.
There's quite a, there's quite a few mechanisms that overlap in this particular scenario.
So it's a pretty serious thing, that when you're caught, it's not just a, and you're done with it. It's a pretty serious violation and has implications to the individual, to the bar, to the whole thing.
Potential is there.
Let me get this straight. If we, if we change the closing time as what we have right here, right now, then they have to stop serving at 1:30?
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the assessment that you guys discussed about the county ordinance versus ours. I just pulled it up and looked at it very briefly. From what I'm reading there, that the patrons still have to be off-premise by 2:00. The only difference between our ordinance and theirs would be that our ordinance is more clear in the sense that we're giving a 30-minute window for people to stop selling alcohol, finish consuming the alcohol that they purchased at 1:30 and then still have time to get off-premise by 2:00. So I, I think it's, it's a little bit more clear than the county ordinance, but it's not really any different. Because they still have to be off-premise by 2:00.
Other cities, it's 2:00.
So.
Well, what about the other cities? You're saying all the other cities, it's 2:00?
I don't, I can't speak to that because all I did was look up the county when I heard county referenced. Yeah.
My husband's.
And we, and we could, we could find that information.
And I guess my question is why, I hate to say this, why wouldn't we know that if the request by the mayor was parity among all the cities? Why would we not start that as our basis for research, I guess?
Yeah, that's true. Not have to say.
I don't think we understood that as the request. It was to roll it back to two is what we understood, but we obviously misunderstood, which I'd like the opportunity to fix that.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, I don't want to try to ram something down the commission's throat. That's just not my style. I waited, I've been, been on this for a year. And so I don't, you know, I don't agree with the rationale that somehow now we need to just go all the way down a whole rabbit hole that we could have been going down. But what I would think that we should do is to bring it back and make it congruent with the majority of municipalities around us and try to be congruent. So if it's 2:00 and they get to get out by 2:30, let's make it that. But go back and, and bring us something like that and then, you know, I think we should decide whether we want to support it or we don't. I'm not, I'm not for going, you know, way down the road.
There's, there's no intention, Mayor, to do that when we come back.
No, that's not, that's not to you, that's, that's to the issue that they, Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner Henry want to go, you know, they want to have a workshop.
When we come back, we'll come back with a full, you won't need a workshop when we come back. I know you've already had one waiting for Commissioner Strickland to come onboard and certainly he's aware of the community. We'll come back with analysis of adjoining properties and cities. We'll have the county's ordinance in place. You'll have a much more comparative, complete document than you have in a simple amendment because truthfully, we did understand it the way I told you. There's no intent to take you someplace you don't mean to go.
Yeah.
And we'll have a lot more information for you and it'll be a much more complete setup.
So are we going to make a motion to continue?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of those who bought their extended permit figuring it was going to be 3:00, would we be in kind of legal thing when they have to close an hour earlier? would we be in kind of legal thing when they have to close an hour earlier?
Well, no, I don't, I don't believe so.
Or would this better be taking effect next year?
This would just apply as of your effective date. We haven't really identified an effective date yet. We need more direction from you if, if you were to pass it. But the requirements of, of this amendment would be implicated, or not implicated, but, but effective as of whatever date you choose.
But it would not make any difference that somebody bought an extended permit figuring they'd be able to stay open until 3 o'clock?
No, the concepts of grandfathering shouldn't apply to permitting like this. These are one-year permits, I believe.
Yes.
And they need to be renewed annually.
Like I said, you'll have a lot more information when we come back.
Yeah, we definitely need more information.
Do we have any questions or anything that we want to ask of staff so that we can make an informed decision? Because I, I think that the question that you all are asking, and I want to know what the question is, what information do you need from staff? Personally, I met with the bar owners on Main Street, you know. I'm sharing with you, you know, as succinctly as I can, the logic that I think meets this standard as to why I think we should do this, which basically is hinged on three things. One, our, our police are overworked. And, and this has a lot to do with why this is necessary. Though the bar owners can't even get police to do details down there, even though they're getting paid $35 an hour.
I'm just curious.
Uh, or 45.
This has been 3 o'clock, all the way back when the drinking age was 18. So all of a sudden, we have more crime and the police are overworked?
Well, this has been an issue and a debate in the city for...
That's why I'm asking.
As long as I've been on the commission and before, that commissions have tried to do this and wanted to do this, or some members of the commission and others did not because they sided with the business interests and the employees that they supported. So, you know, when I was first on the commission in 2016, we went down this road and we made some changes. None of those changes have really worked.
And really, to me, this is not even about alcohol to me, because I'm not really even a drinker. This thing is about the income that they are going to lose that last hour because young people do not go out till about 11 o'clock and the best tippers are that last hour because you have the other bartenders coming and hotels, I mean, so. And that's how they unwind, and that's where you make your money.
I, I understand that, but for me, it's more than just how, what a business does, but it's also about the direction that we want to go in as a community. Who do we want to be? Why do we want to continue to be different? The image problem that we have that is surrounding all of that. And then finally, it also has a lot to do with what the residents want.
Right, and I, I under, I understand what you're saying as well, but I know right now, I don't think it's, this is the time to hurt our businesses even more when they've always been hurt.
Commissioner, you're not allowing me to, to finish making my point.
Go ahead.
Okay, you really, you really aren't. You, I make a point, then you make a point. Okay, so, you know, the final thing for me is, and, and I know I've said all of this, is that the residents have said at some point in time, when are we going to, when are we going to show them that we are their greatest priority? You know, in terms of the people who live here and their quality of life? And that is why so many of them, you know, you want this. And, and much of, you know, the, the arguments that were made before surrounded the idea that, you know, our, not only do our police have to work harder, but the resources that we allocate towards manning this takes away from resources in other parts of the city. And that's a part of what I tried to outline in this, this writing on this manuscript, is one, you know, what happened at E R A U the other day? That's where our police, you know, and, and when they found out about that, you know what time that was? It was 4:00 a.m. in the morning, 4:00 a.m. So our police are stretched, you know, and at some point in time, we got to determine whether we want to support them and reduce the stress that we're placing on them. And so it's really about those three things for me. Police, resident, and reputation. And at the end of the day, if you need something more from staff, let's ask them for it. If you need to speak with the police department, talk to them. If you need to talk to the bar owners, talk to who you need to. I've spoken to the bar owners, they know where I stand. So bring us something back.
Sure.
And then, you know, let's vote it up or down and move on.
If you permit, Mayor. The list that I have is a comparison of our laws to adjacent cities. County versus city, expiration of extended hour permits, effective day of the ordinance to deal with expiration of the extended hour permits. And then just cause our rules to be equivalent to adjacent municipalities, not necessarily using the same words. I heard what Captain Lee said in respect to that. And I've got a couple other side notes that we'll take a, a look at in staff, but I think that's the direction I've heard the commission talk about. If there's other things you want me to add, please tell me, I'll add those to it, and you'll have that material as well.
Okay.
Is that it?
That was great to me.
And I would like to have...
And I would like to...
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just to say, supporting police, I definitely support police. The whole line of police in my family, including my son. But I do support those businesses too, those small businesses and that actually need that money, especially in the last two years. That's why we received the COVID funds to help our businesses because they are hurting right now. So I just don't feel this is the time we should be doing that, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Does the motion include a continuance to a date certain? I would suggest that we have a date certain.
Right now, we just had the motion and the second to, for the ordinance, so we need a motion.
Actually, I would request some time in February, given the time of year it is. January is virtually here right now.
So, first meeting in February?
If that's acceptable, commission.
All right, I amend my motion to the first meeting in February.
Okay, do we have a second?
Commissioner Henry was the second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. We'll see you in February.
Thank you, Commission. Sorry for the mix-up.
Oh, that's okay.
For the record, it's February 2nd, 2022, this one.
Well, I don't know if I'll be here February 2nd, 2022. You may have to continue that February, the second meeting. February 2nd, 2022 is the proposed date for the unveiling of the statue of Dr. Bethune in Statuary Hall.
Oh. Maybe you'll make it...
Let's do it February 16th.
Another one.
And if you all want to have a, some sort of, I don't know, community meeting before the end, let's have it. You got, I think February 16th gives you enough time to have that.
All right, so do you want to revise your motion to February 16th? Is that the second meeting?
16th, yep, okay.
Okay.
So...
All right.
All those...
Is it, and everybody's in favor?
We're just amending it to go to February 16th.
Can I comment now?
Yes, yes.
Can we take the vote on changing the date and then...
No, I'll let him comment first before we vote.
I can comment right quick.
Yes, you can.
My comment is this, I have residents that live over there that I represent, and I have to represent them with what they want. Oh, and so they want the closing time to change. From a personal standpoint, having worked in that business, the only thing that I think personally that will resolve what's happening over there, no matter what time it is, at least between, say, 12 and say 4, the only thing that will resolve that is to dilute the number of people that pour out of those bars drunk at the same time. And there's no way to stagger that to keep them from all coming out, being on the, on the sidewalk at the same time, drunk, crazy, the whole deal. Unless you wanted to go for 24/7, and nobody's going to bite on that.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're going to have to dilute that crowd because you're still going to have that same problem with everybody pouring out on the sidewalk at the same time.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right, thank you. All right, we have, you have a comment?
No, I was going to say, we have a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll move on to item 10B, which is the Police and Fire Pension Fund Board Appointment Ratification Resolution. A resolution ratifying the appointment of one member of the Board of Trustees of the Police and Fire Pension Fund Board for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2025, and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And this is to ratify the appointment of Greg Gerdock for the fifth trustee for the, for the board.
Yeah. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, that was our last item on the agenda.
All right, we'll now move on to commission comments. Uh, who do we start with? Was Commissioner Reed?
Cantu.
Or Cantu in the regular meeting? Reed in the, C R.
Okay. Trying to remember everything I had now. First, I want to say we had the groundbreaking for the new VA out there. Very, very excited about that. Also, today, we had a grand opening for a restaurant depot, depot, excuse me, out on the International Speedway where Home Depot is. That plaza has needed something, and I was out there at 9:30 this morning. It was packed, so I was very pleased to see that. We had the businesses coming from Palm Coast, Winter Park. So I think that's going to be, I'm a great addition to Daytona Beach. And...
Depot.
It's restaurant, yeah, go ahead.
Well, yeah, they, they do the supplies, they supply the restaurants.
But it's, actually, they have supplies, but they actually have groceries too. It's kind of like a sans, but maybe a little bit smaller, yeah. And actually, the public actually can go there. They'll give you one-day passes so you can go in, so. Was that about it? I think that's about all I had.
That's yours?
Okay. All right, Commissioner Henry?
So basketball started at the Y S G Center on yesterday, and City Manager and I both went out to support the young people. And the people were so happy to see City Manager there, supporting the events. I don't even think he got to watch the game very much because I think they talked him and talked him and talked him. So it was just good to see him out supporting that event. We had the Santa Run on last night, and the Santa Run was so awesome. Commissioner Cantu came and supported the Santa Run. City Manager came and supported the, the Santa Run in addition to our fire department, our police department. They all came out and supported the Santa Run. And I'm going to tell you, out of everybody that was there, do you know who had the best time out of everybody? These two right here. They thoroughly enjoyed the Santa Run. They made it rain candy everywhere. Yeah, they made it rain plenty of candy out for everyone, and they were throwing candy out to the adults. And I'm like, why are you all throwing candy to the adults? And they were like, they need a little Christmas candy too, so.
Yeah, Christmas.
Great, great experience. Today, West Side Elementary librarian had their character parade. And each classroom read a particular book and they dressed up as that particular book, and then they came and sang a song to the judges about that particular book. And they had all the characters there. They had Elmo and lots of characters dressed up, and it was just a wonderful event for literacy. Their librarian is moving and shaking when it comes to implementing literacy programs. And Malcolm and I met with her for a long time today to talk about what other types of literacy program that the Neighborhood Watch, myself as commissioner, and the city could do to support, continue to support literacy in those zoned schools because they are still struggling in those schools. So I think those are my only three comments for tonight. Have a wonderful holiday, and hopefully Paula won't have 10 minutes with a comment.
Oh, jeez. Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to commend Chief Young, his staff, and all law enforcement for keeping me safe last week when what could have been something horrific at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. I'd like to share with you all that we have now chartered a National Panhellenic Council for the Daytona Beach area. There are 11 organizations that have come together, the Black Fraternities and Sororities. We had our dinner last night and officers were sworn in, and we are ready to make a difference collectively in our community. You have all of the, the seven in Daytona, the IODs have not chartered a, a grand chapter yet, but we also included the three chapters in Deland of Alpha, Kappa, Alpha, Delta, Sigma, Theta, and Omega, Psi, Phi of Deland have joined the chapters of Daytona Beach. So we named it the Daytona Beach Area Chapter. And we were chartered during the National Panhellenic Conference and then sworn in by a national officer. So that took place last evening at the Midtown Educational and Cultural Center. On this Saturday, from 10 to 3, in front of the Daisy Stockton Park, where we normally park cars, we're going to block off and have the Midtown Holiday Bazaar. So if you've got something to sell, please write P. Reed Events and join Commissioner Reed and the City of Daytona Beach because we recognize that people are having a difficult time and everybody can't go to the mall and buy something new. So if you've got something new at home or slightly used that you'd like to sell or a craft that you do, then come on out and set your table up. It's free for citizens and for business owners to come out and to sell their wares from 10 to 3 this Saturday, December 18th, in front of the Daisy Stockton Park on Bethune Boulevard.
All right.
10 to 3, what's the date?
This Saturday, from 10 to 3. And my closing remarks are, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Songbird, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Traeger?
Talking about Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Our Christmas parade was something wonderful, I thought. We didn't have as many clothes as I would have liked, but we had marching bands, we had people walking, we had people walking with candy throwing out. We had young, old, everybody was there, all along the whole rope route from Bethune Park all the way up to M M B. I thoroughly enjoyed myself, the road and the fire truck, Rosie. And also, I think we did something very historic today about the framework, and I'm really hoping that this starts something great for Daytona Beach. And I'm very pleased that they're also interested in affordable housing. I'm especially hoping that that goes through because it would show that we can have both high-end and affordable with the same developer, and I think that's important. And everybody, happy holidays, whatever you're celebrating, celebrate it to the max.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am, amen. Commissioner?
Couple of things. I was not pleased with the way things were last meeting with the Amazon deal. I realize that our city manager is going to be times where he has to negotiate with nondisclosure. I do think that we could avoid us looking like we're unprepared sitting up here if, once the disclosure can be made, that it be made and we wait at least two weeks before we get it on the agenda. Having it on the agenda last week and being asked to vote on it in 10 or 15 minutes after we know what it is. Now, we represent people here. We were, we were elected to represent them and not make decisions for them. And I think that it would have been a little more palatable for the community if that had been out there for some discussion amongst themselves to get information, you know, to talk to us about it, relay their feelings to us as we are elected to represent them. It was, it seemed like a very forced and, and secretive thing, and, and that's why we're not trusted when we sit up here. Our government is not as trusted as it once was. It could have looked a whole lot more transparent than what it did. I don't see any reason why it couldn't have been done that way rather than the way it was done. And as far as remedy to that is the two weeks, or we could just refuse to negotiate with anybody that wants a nondisclosure, which is probably not a good idea for our, our community as a whole going forward. But just, just something to think about for the future because every time if you ambush me like that, I'm going to say no because I don't think it's fair to the community. It's not fair to us sitting up here. My other thing I would like to say is, you know, I got a spot for the homeless. I got a spot for the homeless shelter in my heart. Let's don't wait until our current agreement runs out and the other cities and the county and us decide we're not going to fund this thing anymore in a couple of years. Homeless people keep coming, they're not going anywhere, and that's not just us, that's nationwide. So we, we need to make a plan and, and I'd be okay if we made a plan that was, that was good enough for somebody else to come ask us about it instead of us going and asking other cities, what are you doing? You know, we're not no longer, as far as I'm concerned, the stepsister in all these things we do. We keep looking, what's everybody else doing? What's everybody else doing? Let's do what we need to do to make Daytona what Daytona used to be, what Daytona can be, and stop trying to be Boca, as you say, or, you know, some of those places. Because I don't care what they're doing, I care about Daytona. And let's do what we need to do. And let's do what we need to do to make Daytona better. And with that, Merry Christmas to all.
Yes, sir, Merry Christmas.
I would like to know, was there an incident that occurred on the water this weekend? I had a resident approach me and her comment to me was, "I think I saw somebody in the water hanging off the side of something." And so do we have a fire rescue, anything like that? Anybody know about the event that took place on the river? Would have been around the bridge area. Anybody comment at all?
No.
Police, anything like that? Oh, okay. Alrighty. Other thing was with regard to us speaking to the residents about the bar closure, what would the specific question be, sir? Want to speak to your residents about the bar closure times, what would the question be?
Oh, it's whatever, you know, we have a proposal. So whatever.
So parity with the other cities around us, is that what we're thinking? Okay. All right, I just want to be sure I'm phrasing it correctly, so that's the right information.
Yes.
Okay, super. Okay, also, this past week I went to the Financial Literacy Event held at Campbell. And I was happy to see there were quite a few adult parents there. They first off at dinner and then following that, the speaker come in and they speak about financial literacy. They give them a book and I thought it was well-attended. I did the Christmas parade, I walked in the parade, and I enjoyed walking. It was nice to see everybody face-to-face, I enjoyed that a lot. One comment that was made with regard to the parade and the time of the parade came from a merchant on Beach Street. The comment was that we had two events running at the same time. So meaning, one in the morning or daytime and then one in the evening with very small leeway in between. And according to the merchant who was actually on Beach Street, it meant that for most of the day, her shop had no access because we had two events going.
I don't think they closed the roads down.
Well, according to her, there were barricades up. And I'm happy to reference the merchant when we're done. I'm sure she's more than happy to have a conversation with you about it. But her thought was, while we may enjoy, and I'm just repeating the thought, the thought was while we may enjoy having a lot of activity and events, just trying to time it out because as a merchant who does service and sales, she actually ran out of supplies, ran out of people able to work and keep up. It's great to have that kind of energy, but she also was not prepared for that in one day. So, and again, I'm happy to give you the name of the store and the merchant.
So, so it was a good thing?
It was, it was a good thing, but she ran out of staff. They were, they were.
So next year she'll know.
And I agree with that, I'm merely just commenting on what the resident and business person asked me to voice publicly. That's what I'm doing right now.
I know, I just want to make sure, you know.
Sure, happy to give you the name and you can follow up yourselves and you're fine with it. All right? Also, I was at the Brown and Brown, they had their new statue put up. I thought it was a good thing to see, it looks like it's looking out, it's a cat and it's poised, it's looking out over the park and over the city. And I thought of it as a, sort of looking at what's coming in the distance. And I thought, okay, this is a nice look to it. I'm still deeply interested in the water, which is why I keep bringing up fire rescue and a potential fire boat. I would like to see us activate the water. I remember going to Beach Avenue with the chamber and I remember seeing the river, a park, a sidewalk with shops, and residential right behind. And we're slowly, we're reaching into that right now. But having that water be active is a big part of it. The water, the Manatee Island area, around the library area, around the rowing club area, having all of that be active, including Halifax Yacht Club and Al Marina. I would like to see all of that working. I keep saying it. Meaning, I'd like to see more activities. I like the Three Brothers. I'd like to see us do a few more events in the Marina area. I've always wanted to see possibly, I'm not sure if we had them before, some sort of a boat concept going on on Beach Street or even by the Marina area. I met with the Marina people, meaning the residents who live there. And they might be part-time, but they use the water a lot. And they would actually be using the downtown area for the restaurants when we open up all of the park. They'd be using the little launches to come out. Alrighty, and thank you so much, everybody. I hope that you have a fantastic Christmas.
All right. So I guess it's on me, I'll be very quick. ERAU, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, and the Daytona Beach Police Department. I think that our Police Department proved why I firmly believe that we have the best Police Department in the country. I'm 100%, behind our department. And the work that they did reminded me of my real thought of when we had Rockville and people were sort of going in about the lady, young lady who relieved herself on stage. And they talked about, you know, in social media, our Police Department and wanting an arrest. But this, that, what they did last week at Embry-Riddle is what they need to be focused on. It's, that's what they need to be focused on. One obscene woman who comes to visit our city should not cause us to get off of our central course as a city or as it relates to law enforcement. They reminded us that they are on their job. And I am beyond proud of them. And I am proud of the young people from Embry-Riddle. And I've asked that their identities, if they so desire, at a later time would be revealed so that we as a community can express our gratitude to them. Because they too are absolute heroes. Absolute heroes. And I am just proud of them. I would like to thank Ms. Priester and all of the folks in Leisure Services who were involved in the mayor's Math Party Boot Camp float. And those who designed it. And those who participated in passing out candy as we walked. It was a great experience. And I cannot tell you how many people, or young people. I got a phone call from a young lady who called and left a message. And she said, "Coach Henry," she's six years old, her dad played for me. "Can I be on your float next year?" And then I've talked to multiple parents who have asked about, you know, Math Party itself and the boot camp. So I think the float was a big hit and our students, our children, who participated in Math Party and then participated in the float showed, you know, what they can do. So that was great, I appreciate that. And my final thing is, I've asked staff to put together a proposal as it relates to towing companies. And it's in ordinance and I need you all to, to see if you all would agree to having them to bring something before us to add a new section to our code of ordinances that requires wrecker services to provide for acceptable methods of payment for towing, which would allow, would compel them to take something other than simply, other than cash. I had a resident to reach out to me and say that they were trying to get their vehicle and there was a tow company that would only take cash. Well, now we know. So we know what ends up happening in that case. I go down and you tell me I gotta have cash. I don't have cash, you get to keep my vehicle for another day or two days. And then you jack, you know, you run up the price on me. So if you all would be agreeable, staff is prepared to bring something before us. So are we agreeable to consider that?
Yes.
Okay.
Certainly, we can have something drafted for the next meeting with the City Manager's approval.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the final thing, Scott, one more. After we get past bar closing, I will come back and make a presentation to the Commission on a certain area in our city that I would like to see us consider, expanding Airbnbs and short-term rentals. And it is a certain area that I have researched and studied. And I will share my insight and input with you at that time. But I do want you to know that that is a, it's another elephant. But I don't believe in, I try not to give us too many elephants at one time. But to go where we need to go, I think we have to eat some elephants. So thank you all for indulging me. And that concludes our comments. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
I was going to say, I'm not that hungry.
Yeah, I guess you're losing weight, yeah.
A couple, just a couple items. First, I want to really thank Commissioner Cantu for the work in regards to Congressman Walts and the work we're trying to do in the Midtown MB Street area in reference to flooding. She has been, I almost said agitator. She's been an activist, probably, that too. And I think that based on what I've seen in the last major flood that we had, if we're able to get the funding for the Midtown and the MB Street area for it to deal with flooding, that's going to be a success for all of us. So thank for that. Also recently, Team Volusia had a meeting and a discussion where eight colleges and universities that are in our area, but we have six in Daytona Beach. The other two are the Setson and Palmer. But the presidents of all of those colleges and universities were here talking about what's taking place in Volusia County and in particular Daytona Beach. The only president that was not here was the president of Florida State University, but the new UCF president was actually here talking about the value of education that's in our area and what we can do with those students and how we, the things we need to do from a workforce standpoint to make sure that those students stay in our area, have the accommodation. So it was very good. And our communications team put together a quick, within about 24 hours, a brochure so I can give to those presidents and those groups to let them know the type of students we have here. And we may not realize the value of having 44,000 students in our, in our city where you can get a PhD. So I often have been saying you can go from a pre-K to a PhD in Daytona Beach. That is the value we have and the type of students we have. And we need to try to cultivate those students to get them to stay here. And I just wanted you all to be aware that those presidents were here and it was a great thing. Just want to announce, and we'll put something out, January 19th at 5:15 will be the State of the City. It will be held here in City Hall, here in the Commission Chambers, where the mayor will give the State of the City address. It's normally been him sitting behind a desk with notes, but we are going to. We think it's important if the other cities around us are having State of the Cities to make the presentations required by our charter to have one. So the mayor will do a State of the City and we're going to invite the community out at 5:15. We'll have a reception out front. Our communications team and our productions team are putting together some videos, all the great work that's been done here in Daytona Beach over the year. And the mayor will give us an update on what's taken place this past year and what's on the horizon for us. So January 19th, 5:15, we'll get information to the Commissioners of what we may need from you all in reference to that State of the City address. But we look forward to the city citizens coming out. And also will be a live presentation if they can come out. So that concludes my report. And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa. And if you don't celebrate anything, just happy life.
Merry Christmas, everyone, thank you.
All right, this portion of our meeting is over. At this time, we will hear from the most important members of our community or the most important people, the people of Daytona Beach and.
Okay, our first speaker is Lee Kinzer and on deck is Randy Gray.
Mayor, how are you?
Good, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Colburn Lee Kinzer and I live at 2318 South Peninsula Drive. You may have remember me from a few months ago, back in September, I spoke about, I think it's Resolution 2020-120. It was an abandonment of some property on the riverfront. And I met with the mayor and then you made some comments here and kind of said within 10 seconds realistically that, to paraphrase, that we made a mistake and we've got to fix it. If I'm not mistaken, that was what it was. And I've requested a few updates and you gave me one update that there wasn't any update. That was on October 18th. Then on November 30th, I asked for an update and I got no response. Mr. Brown has asked for updates quite a few times and we've got no response. It's been a quarter of a calendar year, three months since that happened. And I'd like to know if we've got any updates yet.
Well, he can, I'll let the manager share the update, but I will say to you that I'm still just as resolved, but if you want to speak to the issue.
The City Commissioners directed me to go out and visit with the property owners, landowners. Me and Deputy City Manager Drew Driscoll, we did meet. They have no desire to turn back over the property or the vacation. We did receive however, letters from them that they did send letters out and had to the community, the properties owner surrounding. I have a copy of the letter and all the letters, the people that did receive the letter. So the letters did go out from Cobb Coal and that they have no desire to close that off from the residents. That they, I have the letter, that the residents are more than welcome to come and utilize that particular property. They have not closed it off, putting up gates that people can't come on their property. They provided cameras of residents, images of people going onto the property and enjoying the property, but also images of individuals riding motorcycles on the property. And so it's a decision that the Commissioners will have to make, but the property owners have no desire to return the vacation back over to the city of Daytona Beach. And I did provide, I think I sent something to the Commissioners that denote the letters that was sent out to all of the residents in the neighborhood. And if Drew Driscoll have any other comments beyond what I've said, that is where it stands at with that.
What was the letter intended to contact us before the abandonment or was it after the abandonment?
It was, it was after the abandonment when someone came forward to the Commission and said that they're not able to have access to the property. And so they provided, I was provided the letter that was sent out to all of the residents. But it was after the abandonment.
I have a copy of that letter, yes. However, there are some dock piling telephone poles that are still in there. Mr. Mayor, you saw those?
Yeah.
They're in front of it. That is a violation of that right for those people to be able to access that. There are, there are some older people that have boats that want to access that.
But it's not, it's not for boats.
It's, it's a small rowboat.
It is, and it has the mangrove, so you can't have a large amount of things going through that. It's a species that is protected. So there's not for cars to be able to go, go to the property. So I went to the property. I walked to the property, I walked down. The question that I think that, I don't think we should have, have to go back and forth. The question is if the Commissioners would like to pursue the process of having the property brought back to them. However, the landowners, the property owners have stated they do not have a desire of stopping people from coming onto the property and going down to the, like, through the access. The question that the Commissioners have to deal with is do they want to go to the process of trying to take that vacation back and turning that property back over to the citizens of Daytona Beach? But the landowners, the property owners that went through the process to vacate have made a decision that they do not want to give the property back over to the city of Daytona Beach. But it's still access. If you go there now, you can, you can actually walk down to the property. I've seen the video of residents on the property. I've seen the video of residents in the community riding dirt bikes, not on the, not just on the vacation, but in the people's backyards. And so that's what they're dealing with. And they, technically, they could put up a fence right now and block it off, but they have not. And that's why they sent the letters to the residents saying you have access to this. And it's just something from my perspective that the Commissioners need to make a decision if they want to go down the road of having our legal counsel try to get that property back to the citizens.
I would like to see the dirt bikes because the two sons of one of the residents have dirt bikes. And that may be the video. I've never seen a dirt bike there and I live only a couple of hundred, maybe 100 yards away.
If you provide me the email, I'll send you the exact packet I gave to them.
LeeKinzer@hotmail.com. And, and as for putting up a gate, I think that would be in violation of a Supreme Court, Florida Supreme Court ruling, Cardish versus Soper, that the upland homeowners would have that access still as it was designated on that deed page, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that's been upheld numerous times.
Well, I have stated in the past at a commission meeting that the homeowners within the Platte subdivision may have rights of pursuit.
And that would be a civil matter.
That'd be a civil matter between.
Which we're prepared to take and, and if we didn't have any kind of update, we're prepared to take legal action against the city as well. So, okay, thank you very much. On another note.
Before you go, I, I think that, you know, I've. Well, before you go, I, I think that, you know, I've said this before and I knew we would have to have this discussion. If you've been down there, you, you, you would agree, I think, that we probably shouldn't have given that away.
Definitely not.
You know, I, that's, that's the assessment that I make, but I, I can't, you guys would have to decide whether you think that we should ask our legal department to engage in, uh, taking, uh, because from the way that I see the situation, we've given it away, but we do have a right to take it back because it, you know, you only have so many opportunities to access the water from there and this was one. And although the people who live in that neighborhood have it, you and I now don't have it. And when you look at that parcel, I, I think what the property owners may have, maybe their intention is to be able to protect their rights, but we've, we've really given away something. So I wanna encourage you all to take a look at it and then see if you would agree with me so that we can together direct our team as to what they should do or what we want them to try to do.
One thing it, it does say, and I, I think one of the things is, is a, is, is not, I don't think it says that it should be river access and that's the, gonna be the...
It's a river approach on the deed.
It's a river approach, so really much is you can walk out there, um, but it's really not for taking really thing, anything out there.
Yeah.
And so that's gonna be the key discussions that go back and forth because, you know, I may wanna take a kayak out there, but really is that what it can be done or is it just really a re... Is it a river approach or river access? And so, a, as the, the city manager and as legal counsel, I'm gonna give you the best information for us to win if we go down that road. So if, if, if individuals say it's a, uh, river, um, access, um, I don't think that is the case. I think it's a river approach, uh, because it, it's a good place to put a kayak or put a canoe, um, whether it's a thousand residents come up here or 70,000 or two. I'm gonna give you the best advice from my professional standpoint and right now, river access and river approach are two different things. So people being able to go down there, it's one standpoint and other. And then I'll let the legal department and you all as a commission, but I feel it's my duty to say what can be done and then let's make a decision as elected officials for the residents if we need to go about, down that road. Because if we do take it back and people wanna do take kayaks and canoes and all that, that may not be allowed. It may just be you can walk down there, look at the water and that's it. And that may not be what the residents want. So should we as a commission and as a city look at where can we have access for people to go into the river with kayaks, canoes, boats and not just look at this one little area? And so I don't want us to...
So, so, so the point is, and I agree with this, you have to have a total discussion about what we get our, what's our greatest value. You know, is our greatest value to take this back and use it for what it was intended? Or should we do something that the general public might have greater access to water? Uh, and then we'd have to determine whether the fact that we, in my opinion, took something away from the public and they choose to sue us or whatever, whatever litigation they choose to bring before us, whether it's worth that. Um, and I'm agreeable to a discussion, but I would like for us to flesh out all the facts and for you all to see it, to be able to make a decision to, as to what we think.
And I will be willing to take each commissioner out there to see it, uh, and see the environment because if, if it became a river access, the question I'm gonna have, where are they gonna park? It's a neighborhood. I can't drive my, um, Ford Explorer up there with a boat, cause I gotta find somewhere to park, so I'm parking in front of somebody's driveway and you already know what's gonna happen there. There's not enough parking spaces for certain things. So we as a commission and a, uh, an administration need to say, is, are we going after this property because we gave away something that we probably shouldn't have given away? Uh, or do we as a city need to invest money in making sure we have access for the entire population of residents and not for, and I'm just saying it, 10 residents who have had access, um, that it may not be beneficial for? You can't go, I, I can't, I can't take my car and park. I can't, I can't do it, cause it's gonna be in front of somebody's home and there are only enough spaces for maybe two cars on a drive to be there. And that's what I want, if you all think that if we've given something away, I do think we should talk about it, but I don't want us to go down the road of spending $100,000 on an attorney or in-house attorney.
We'd have to pay outside counsel as well.
Outside counsel.
When you talk about taking something back, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
But when we talk about taking something back, you have to understand that process would probably be through eminent domain. And when you do that, there are costs associated with that. You have to pay market value, you have to pay expert cost, uh, you have to go through the process. So what happened by, by way of the vacation of the right of way, that title passed, uh, to the neighboring property owners, so they are lawful owners absent a, you know, you suing the city or the neighbors suing the city and the court declaring that there's some irregularity in that process. But as we sit here today, um, that process was valid and the only way to take it back would be for the city to go through the process of eminent domain by which we have to show necessity, um, and various other factors.
Yeah. So, so what happens when you file a false employment application with the city and then the city finds out about it later on that your application was false? Are you terminated? Because the application from the get-go was false regarding the bridge that the city, the property was set aside for. And I understand, I, I'm gonna sit outside for a few minutes after the meeting and if anybody'd like to have a discussion with me, I'd be more than happy to talk to them. I'd be more than happy to help you host, any of the commissioners that'd like to come down there as...
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
On another note, I'm all for the 2 o'clock license and I have a lot of expertise in that as I was the president of the Northern Kentucky Restaurant Association, not here.
Okay, sir, she's gonna have you put your email on there for, for you, okay?
Okay.
And we have a similar situation, so I could help out with that.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Randy Gray and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Uh, my name is Randy Gray and I live at 2301 South Halifax Drive, Daytona Beach. Um, you know, anything I say in this is all constructive criticism. Nothing's meant to be personal or degrade or, or belittle anyone, but my reason for being here, as well as Lee, is, uh, the giving away for free, uh, the river approach between the properties of 2320 and 2314 South Halifax Drive that was selfishly and falsely applied for and awarded to both homeowners of the address above with, at that time, without one of the city officials, uh, seeing what they gave away. No one went there till after the fact. Ken Strickland said so himself. You're not gonna throw something at me in 15 minutes and expect me to vote, cause I'm gonna vote no. Unfortunately, he wasn't here at that time. Um, one would think that giving away riverfront property, that somebody here amongst us would investigate what we were giving away for free, especially riverfront property, because I would love to have some. I, I, where do I sign? This was all, this was all voted for on May 20th of 2020. Ken, you weren't here, Mr. Strickland, uh, when City Hall was closed due to COVID, everything was done via internet or you guys were here and it was closed to the public. I'm not sure how it was working, but there was also a 10:00 PM curfew, uh, that was in effect. You know, people, we were all concerned about where we, we were going to get our necessities and staying alive. That, that was our main concern at that time. I think everybody will agree. I mean, we were all in a panic. Uh, this was all done and voted for in a matter of six seconds, six. Uh, but that's all behind us now and, and since then, Quanita's come out, uh, Quanita May, Ms. May, and, and Mr. Hen, uh, Mayor Henry both visited the site. And Mayor Henry, as Lee stated, you know, you, you knew in 10 seconds, hey, we, we probably made a mistake. You know, we probably shouldn't have given this away. We need to fix it. Uh, we, we also, he also, Mayor Henry also commented, um, that you can do a taking, that we can do a taking first, let's talk. And we knew, we know now, and I didn't think it would be in the cards.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Cedric Turner.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Bridge, Daytona Beach. I'm the third part of the trifecta you're getting this evening. Mr. Mayor, I do wanna thank you for coming down. There's several key points that I don't think were emphasized loudly and clearly enough. And I know, uh, Mr. Fiecher was not here at the time and of course Ken wasn't and I've spoken to him previously about this whole issue as well. The fact that the meeting was closed back on May 20th, the fact that there was no public notification of the fact that public land deeded to the public forever in 1926, when we didn't have a lot of lawyers splitting hairs on whether it's river approach, river access, whether they can bring a boat down, a canoe down. It was used as a canoe launch for many, many years. You can talk to the residents who have lived there for many, many years. They will tell you, they went down there with their canoes, they went down there to go swimming. It was complete access. If you read the deed in there, it says forever to all the residents. And a secret clandestine, seemingly, the appearance on May 20th, and Mr. Fiecher, you weren't here unfortunately, it was all given away for free. Now, I've heard our city attorney talking about how we'd have to go and use this procedure where we have to pay them for land that they receive for free, but the key issue in all of this is that it was a faulty application. If you go back and read the application, and in fact you can look at your notes on this, and I know, Mr. Fiecher, again, you weren't here, but you're welcome to read the notes. Okay, the application says that it was abandoned property. It was not. The application says that it had der, uh, derelict people running around, vagrants that running around. Okay, there was complete research done on the property, on their all legal reports. There weren't none. Citizens that have lived here for a long time have known that that was their public property. It's on the deed, it's not just 10 people. It's the entire, I believe it's well over 100, uh, homes in that area that all have it on their deed, that forever they will have this river access. So again, it's not just a simple case of, oh gee, we screwed up and we gave it away and we're gonna have to pay to get it back and are we gonna have to put it in a public parking lot? No, that's not the case. The case is, this is the way Daytona was built years ago. And this is not the only river access that has been taken away through one method or another. We have now created a wall all the way from Daytona shores and Port Orange, all the way up the entire beachside where it seems that only the wealthy are gonna have access to the river. Now, there was some other talk in here, uh, Commissioner May stated that would be nice to have the river be more vibrant, more things going on. Well, one of the things that would be nice, I ended up selling my canoe, cause I couldn't launch it. I can't carry my canoe, uh, you know, uh, several miles to find a public place to go, okay? But that was how this property is used for many, many years. Please reconsider.
Our next speaker is Cedric Turner and on deck we have Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Cedric Turner. I work at 522 M&amp;B. And, uh, you all are getting ready to start a project soon to beautify M&amp;B and that's great, but with that project, there's some things which you have to fix. And me working there, I see it daily. One of the things is the speeding. When I look out as I'm cutting a customer sitting on, on the front porch of the barber shop and a vehicle comes by and I can't make out the vehicle, I can just say it's red or it's green, that's a big problem. If the vo train has to stop in the middle of traffic, he has to wait because someone parks up and gets out, walks in the store, order their food, get their smokes and drinks and wait about five minutes, it's even a bigger problem. But when you have a vehicle parked the wrong direction in traffic and sits there and I say, hey, man, you know, you, you might wanna move, you gonna get a ticket? And they walk in there and I watch a police officer ride by and nothing happened, I just look like, man, I, did you see that? That officer has created a standard, cause he's saying it's okay that you could do that. Now, it's also, it could be where his hands are tied, I don't know that, but there's disconnect somewhere and it has to get fixed. If you can sit on the front porch, I watch people do drugs right on the church steps all the time. They're making the deals there and everything. Me, as a citizen, you sit here and people hear stories of, I don't wanna talk to the police. Well, I myself, two years ago, when that incident happened, I was the one that had to go to that trial. So I was helping those officers, cause that's still my community and I'm gonna do what I have to do. You know, I mean, it was shocking, I tried to do the right thing, but I couldn't help. I just need some help here. I think that the police presence has to be more. You can't wait until something happens and be reactive, you gotta be proactive. And, you know, it's good officers out there, I see them, this is not anything bad against the police department. I'm just saying, as the people sitting here that they answer to, I'm just coming to you all now, letting you know what I see, cause I'm on ground. So, that's all I can do is come and ask and I would appreciate the help that I get because it's speeding and all the issues that I just caused are very bad. And the park now, they, I literally heard today, somebody came by and they asked who's in the park and that's where they go and hang out and do their thing. So that's pretty bad, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to know which park, Mr. Turner, are you referring to?
I'm referring to what we call it Hallen Park, but the park behind, yeah.
All right.
Joe Harris.
Joe Harris Park. And, and also, Mr. Manager, um, behind their shop, I went there the other day, I had a call to come, there's a, a parking area that we own that is full of potholes. In fact, I took, I took a, a lesson from you and took a panoramic view of, um, of that and that ugly lot that's behind my house that we cut. It's about to be Christmas time. And, um, I'll be sending them both to you prior to your, your getaway.
I have the same pictures, I took pictures too. I went to take a look at it and the fact that we own it, but it looks like this, I was thinking if you were having your event there, you wouldn't want to have your event there. And there's some other things that are sticking up out of the ground that are dangerous, uh, to walk around, just saying.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is John Nicholson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. Uh, I'm also concerned about the property that was given away. It needs to be returned to the public. We have rights and the property should have never been given away in the first place. So I'm asking you all to work and get this property returned to the rightful owner, the citizens of this community. It was done illegally and it needs to be corrected, so you need to fix it. Also, I like to complain also about Martin Luther King. I heard the mayor state tonight that the police is not, the police is overworked, where they're not. They're not patrolling Martin Luther King at all, they're not patrolling my community. Ever since they left Orange Avenue and went out, we have been neglected. There's been a shooting and a killing there on Mayor McCalpethorne. My cousin got shot and is dead today, a young man, Mr. Gordon, uh, Bobby Gordon's nephew, was killed over there by that car lot. So we, we have not had the police in our area, our past, the Johnson services, uh, right there where they wash cars, there was a car illegally parked there on the street that you had to go around with the lights on. So if they are not patrolling our area, that's a problem. They need to patrol the area, cause we are taxpayer and citizens and this is not about you saying that they're overworked, they're not overworked, because they're not patrolling our area. The people are speeding by my house every day. I live there on Key Street, right behind the craft stop. They're going 50 and 60 miles an hour. That needs to be, to be fixed. So when people are going across the yellow line when I'm going down Martin Luther King, they're passing me constantly. This happens every day. And, 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 you know, I'm thinking, well, I could have an accident, because they're going around and they're supposed to stay in their lane. So we need these people to do their jobs that we are paying them to do and that is not happening. Also, I went up to the pavilion, pavilion up by City Owl and I was there and they finally went there and removed the rope and took and cleaned all the buried crap that had been sitting there for years. We need you to go back... need you to go back up there and open those pavilions. And we need to clean them up, put the benches back and the tables back. This happened since you've been in office, all of you, except probably Stacy and Ken Strickland. We need to get those pavilions open because we're paying taxes and we should have access to those pavilions. And so what we are doing is going back in time. We need to fix these things. And you need to fix the other access to them because it is all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grand Brew Avenue. Several things. One, I don't know if we have keys to the city, if we have that process. I wish we would do it. If not, some kind of honor for the gentleman that reported the Emery Riddle shooting. I think the city should honor them in either a plaque or keys to the city. Two, that vacation, I was here for that, sat in the lobby, couldn't hear what you were talking about. I don't recall at any time the city saying that these people had a right to that property. I believe the gentlemen were worried about the homeless and the problems that were occurring on that property. That's why they asked for it to be vacated. I may be mistaken, but I think that's the reason why. Secondly, speeding, A1A, Friday and Saturday night, it's a drag racing. I would like to have a police officer on the beach side before 3 o'clock at night. The paving, I've walked the area on MMB. There's a city lot right next to Daisy Stocking Park that needs to be repaved. And then there's two or three lots on the other side that need to be repaved. If they're done, it would really enhance that neighborhood tremendously. Regarding the 2 o'clock closing, about 22 years ago, Darlene Jordan had a thing about improving the city of Daytona Beach. It cost us $1 million and all the way to the Supreme Court to get the adult entertainment out of the city, the totally nude. All right? After that, she decided that she wanted the bar closing. She was talking about the people rushing from Town Lounge, which is right on the other side of Seabreeze Bridge, to get over the bridge for the last few minutes to drink. Well, it gave them an hour to drink to go a five-minute drive. So what we did was, we decided to change the law by 15 minutes. That's all we did. The old law was changed to this existing law by 15 minutes. You were going to change to another law by only a half an hour. So it's not a great change. All right? The premise that you're doing for these is what you have to look at. Why are you doing what you're doing? The neighborhood talks about the noise. Well, one half of the street is my side. We don't hear the noise. All right? Her half, I've walked it at 2, 3, 4, and 5 o'clock in the morning. They don't have any noise either. They used to, but Confetti's been closed for 30 years. Trash. There is no trash. There's a gentleman behind me that was there. I asked him specifically to look for the trash and there wasn't any. The noise occasionally, the hookah bar. That's the problem, the hookah bar. Problem. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams and on deck is Chris Bowler.
Oh, I know. Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue. What a year we've had. We've seen some great transitions in this year. We've seen the old, out with the old, in with the new. And so first, I want to say thank you guys so much for all the hard work you've done, especially in my zone. I do want to thank the city manager and commissioners that came out to the Santa Run. We had an absolutely great time. But I also want to thank the police department and the fire department for their hard work and their dedication and the Santa and all of that stuff that they did to make that a great success. We're looking to do some great things next year. I'm hoping that the youth commission comes in the beginning of the year. I'm hoping that we can give back to our communities more and even with our opera funds. We're so thankful for all the work we've done. Sometimes we don't pause and look back at what we've already got accomplished within this little bit of time that we've been active. I would say this in response to the bar closing time, just the same as we talk about this, this little patch of land, and I don't, I don't mean to downgrade it, but I do would like to invite any city commissioner that wants to go see what nightlife is in the city of Daytona Beach. I'm available Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday of your choice.
Are you paying?
Oh, I don't pay when I go out. So I'm VIP in these streets. So, no, but I say that to say this. It's funny and, you know, we will have a good time, but once we've all said the same thing, you don't know what you're voting on unless you come out here. We do have a good time in this city. I do enjoy going to Jacksonville. I do enjoy going to Orlando, but I have an even better time right here in my own city. And until you see it for yourself, until you get to meet the DJs, until you get to meet the bartenders, until you get to meet these people that make this nightlife worth it, you would definitely have a different approach on it. I would say this, I'm going to take a break in January. So I'll see y'all in February.
Our next speaker is Chris Bowler and on deck is Destiny Williams.
That microphone's not meant for me, I guess. Chris Bowler, 573 Marina Point. Wanted to make a couple of comments here. First, I want to compliment the city manager. The city manager walks, I'm sure you guys have all been on them, what energy that brings to our city and, you know, just a breath of fresh renewed spirit and having pride and passion in the community. It was, it was great to see you down on Walkin' Beach Street and going through there. And I encourage you to continue those walks. I know you did on Midtown and different places, Main Street. So really brings some great life to us. Obviously, we had the city water line, line issue. If you live at Marina Point where we live, we actually thought it was our water lines that broke. So when the, when the water pressure went off, my wife called right away. She's like, oh no, we had what we've been concerned about for multiple years happen. It wasn't us, actually. So we were somewhat thankful. But I do ask, hopefully we can work with you. I'm happy to, you know, run point, but what grants may be available for, you know, our community? Clearly, over time, the infrastructure did not get brought up to city code standards. And we can talk about whose issue that was and what developer. But at some point right now, you have residents out there that at some point could be without water, you know, if one of those lines go into those 97 units. And I'd rather be proactive and happy to be a resource over there, working with the two associations. So if there's any willpower there. Extended hours, obviously, you know, I didn't come up here on behalf of Daytona Beverages to speak in favor or negatively, but do have a lot of, you know, knowledge about the industry. I'll tell you the three-tier system, where the middle tier, we can shut down any license. And that's the whole point of ABT, you know, that shuts down primary licenses for underage serving, but also breaking any laws, right? And that means serving past 2 o'clock, whoever it is. I did contact some of our constituents, just kind of see where they stand, what their litmus is. I don't think we're so far off as a city in what we need to do. I think compromise could prove to be a nice, happy medium, you know, whether that's shutting off at 2 o'clock, you know, and letting them get out of there. You know, the thing that I've always asked, why are we three? And it was always to allow the patrons who actually serve people to have a place to go. Now, is our city the one that has to provide that? You know, I'll leave that up to you guys and where we go from there. But that was always the reason why we had the extra hours and a lot of history behind that and why Daytona Beach sat there. But I think it does, you know, call a little bit, you know, more information to be done and probably the bar patrons and the residents. And the last speaker, you know, having been chair of the chamber, we heard a lot about spring break. And I invited all my co-business owners to come out with me to go out to spring break. And everyone hears spring break. Quite frankly, it doesn't exist. I don't tell Hannah Zbush that. But until you walk a mile in the shoes, it's very concentrated. They're really out of control when it comes to it. But thank you guys very much and have a great holiday.
Thank you. You didn't? Yeah, well, that's true.
Our next speaker is Destiny Williams and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening. Destiny Williams, 809 Cottle Circle. Thank you, Jenny. I'm not the last speaker today. I wanted to comment on a few things. I wanted to go off what Malcolm said earlier, his invitation for you all to come out with him. You will have the VIP treatment. I can attest to that. It is something to consider also with the bartenders and with their income and needing that extra hour. I think that is something that should also be considered when we're wanting to have these apartments and these other things come to the city. You want them to have something to do. I think that should be in consideration as well. Shout out to Chief Young and the police department for handling that situation. Emery Riddle, that was kind of scary, close to home. And I also wanted to bring up the water advisory notice. I'm not sure if it was talked about earlier. I didn't get a notification. I just happened to go on social media and see somebody post it. And I'm like, okay, wow, didn't know this was going on. People are like, well, you can see it on social media. My grandmother doesn't have social media. She doesn't have a smartphone if there is an app. I think that some sort of call system or text system should be in place for the citizens. And someone mentioned that to me. I've signed up. I've never gotten a notice on the city's website where you sign up to get updates. I've never gotten an update. I don't know if I didn't do it right. I don't know if there's a glitch, but that's just something to consider. So yeah, happy holidays to y'all. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. You too. So Malcolm, you invited us to come and go out with you. My initial thought was, I ain't going out with him. I might be, I might have to get that some thought.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak and on deck is Ellen Knight.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. I have to confess that at almost 60 years old, I'm a lot more likely to be in a bar at 3:00 in the afternoon than at 3:00 in the morning. But, you know, whatever. I'm really appreciative of the, of the people on South Peninsula who have highlighted this issue about the river point, whether it's an approach or an access. It's a really good point. One of the things I noticed when I moved here is when I walked up and down the river and looked down the side streets, there's always like a chain link fence at the end of the little streets, like blocking off the river in all these different points. We do have some really good parks. We've got the Seabreeze Park and the Collins Park. And I guess both of those are access because a car could park there and people could put their boats in. But just to look at the end of the side streets and see a chain link fence, it seems bizarre to me. It seems like we shouldn't be allowed to do that. It almost seems like a desecration of, of public good, of a riverfront. I think the homeowners obviously should be allowed to fence their properties like down to the river, but having a fence blocking off the river seems kind of strange. So hopefully we can look into that. I'd like to get a kayak again, but I can't drag it like a mile and a half or whatever. What else? Oh, the parade was so charming that I love, I love our city. So everything is always charming, but the parade was awesome. The math party and everything else was awesome. The wine walk on Beach Street was really fun. I noticed one of the things I always notice on Beach Street when I'm walking around, getting tired, I always end up sitting on the ground because we need some benches. And so one of my favorite hashtags, I like to take pictures of myself sitting on the ground, eating food or drinking wine or whatever. I've sat on the ground around the corner from Mo's Deli with my food in Midtown, sat over there to eat. And then I have sat on the ground on Beach Street. So I'll sit on the ground as long as I can get up, you know, and then when I'm too old to be able to get up, I don't know what I'll do. Hopefully, we'll have some benches by then. The things that we do to punish homeless people or people that we see as not doing good behavior also end up punishing all of us. Like, everybody has to sit down. Everybody has to go to the bathroom. Everybody loves the parks on City Island. So I know we'll work something out. Thank you all. Have a wonderful holiday and I will see you around.
All right.
Our next speaker tonight is Emily Knight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here as the co-chair of the Seabreeze Neighborhood Watch. And I'm representing a lot of citizens who can't be here tonight, but have grave concerns about the bar closing. And I would just like to say, please consider the residents when you're considering this issue because we pay our taxes. We try to uphold the city and improve it in so many ways, volunteering here and there. The Seabreeze area didn't start off as the crime grime and party time that we have now, that Commissioner Strickland campaigned on. And we would like to see it go back to the wonderful neighborhood that it once was with thriving businesses of all sorts on Seabreeze Boulevard. It has gone into a continual decline, unfortunately. And it is very disturbing to have the noise that we have to deal with. We have city taxpayer funds now collecting trash, being used to collect trash on Seabreeze Boulevard because there is so much of it every day, every morning. This is something that all of us Seabreeze residents have seen day in and day out. It's a very real situation. And if you talk to the litter picker uppers, they'll tell you how much trash they pick up. Wells Fargo has their own litter picker uppers because there's so much. Walgreens has their own litter picker uppers. And I invite you to go down there and talk to these guys because some of them won't even go into certain areas within the property because of, unfortunately, needles and other dangerous trash, human kinds of trash. It's bad. Not to mention the code enforcement issue of trash. Right now, it's been six months and we're still trying to get the back alleyways fixed up because some of their trash was just leaking right onto the streets, the driveways, having to walk through it. And that's a health hazard, certainly. That problem, as Captain Lee can tell you, has not been fixed yet. We're still working on it. So enforcement of all of the special regulations, cameras, that remains to be seen too. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
All right, Daytona Beach. Great meeting. Good night. Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and all other happiness.